Good evening, and welcome to the April Board of Education meeting. The Lake Mills Board of Education meeting. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. I'm Rick Mason, Board President, and verification of meeting notice.
The agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader on April 1st and posted at the Lake Mills Library, the Lake Mills Post Office, and the Bank of Lake Mills, as well as posted on the district website that day as well.
Could we stand and do the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to call the meeting in order. Could we have a roll call, please?
John Delaney here.
Rachel Davies here.
Robert DiNperio. David Rado.
Here.
Richard Mason.
Here. Any agenda revisions? I don't believe there are any, so could we have an approval? A motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second?
Moved in second and approve agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, that passes. Mr. Buckholz, student representative.
To start with sports, baseball's currently three and three, and they're hitting better than people expected. They play Lakeside Lutheran tomorrow at home, and Captain Nick Carpenter is quoted as saying, "We're proving all of the doubters wrong this year." Girls soccer is one, one and one. They're playing competitively against good teams. They play Sugar River tomorrow. Boys and girls track. Boys took sixth out of thirteen teams, and girls fifth at the last meet. They have a positive outlook on the season. According to the boys' captain, Nolan Carleston, they have a lot of young, rising talent. Solo and ensemble, the state meet is coming up at Whitewater on April 27th. AP literature class and creative writing attended the Great World Texts at UW-Madison, and they presented and shared projects on A Small Place by Jamaica Kincaid. And the spring play is coming up. They're opening on the 12th at 7:00 p.m., and their shows are 13th on 7:00 p.m. and 14th at 1:30.
Thank you. Thank you. Policy committee. I'm on the policy committee along with Dr. Delaney, and we met last month. And the company that does our updating for all of the policies is called Neola, and they do that twice a year. And this is the second time of the year that we've had an update. And most of the update is a revision because of law or to make it easier to understand. So hopefully, the board has had a chance to read through those. It's really interesting reading. It's lengthy and all that kind of thing. But that would be the first reading then, is that correct? On the policy. So I don't know if there's any questions or not, but it's all pretty straightforward. The addition, let me see, is the school resource officer, policy 8407 is now included. And Mrs. Strike met with the police chief, and he's on board with all of that policy information. So that's probably the biggest change. I don't know if there's any questions anybody has. Once you read through that, I think it'd probably make a little sense. All right, administrative reports. Mrs. Thompson and Mr. Dayton.
Good evening. The last few months, I've been talking to you about a before and after-school care program. Tonight, Mr. Dayton is here to give us some more details about what that program will look like for next school year.
Yep, thank you. So in your board packet, we included the write-up that we sent to families regarding the before and after-school program. This, I'll just quickly summarize it for you all, but then also, I mean, this has been something that we've kind of had in the back of our mind for a while, and it's really great. We've got the staffing. We've got our ducks in a row as far as getting this up and rolling, so we're all really excited for this. It's going to take place at the elementary school. It's open to 4K through 4th grade. This program is supposed to be wraparound care, so before school, for those families who need to get to work earlier because of their schedule, they can drop their kids off at school early. We'll have staff there to watch them there. And then after school, they can stay right there in the same location. And then for those who work late, they can then, it allows the families some flexibility and some peace of mind, too, that their kids are going to be in one location and cared for by professional staff from our department. We're going to run the school year, the length of the school year, and then hopefully then they would all transition back into our summer playground program, which we started last year, which was a huge hit. Let's see here. Our hours are 6:00 a.m. to 7:45, and then they roll right into the school year, or school day, and then 3:10 to 5:30 p.m. So first off, I want to thank Amanda for all the work that she helped us with this. We did surveying of parents to get a general idea of where they were at and what they needed, and that really helped us hone in on what kind of product we wanted to provide to the community. Of those, yes, elementary school families, we surveyed, 178 of them replied back. And then of those 100, or 178, 130 of them said that, yes, they'd show interest. So it's been good, good kind of reply back from the community, so we know there's a need for it. And some of the things we're doing on the backend, too, we actually purchased some software to help us manage care. It's a different world as far as like how we manage the data, how we allow parents to pay for things, and then also see their schedules as well. So we're putting the pieces in place to make our role successful in implementing it, and then their role as far as using the care. I think that's it. So if you have any questions beyond this page, you can ask it, yes.
Ben, what was the afternoon time?
Yeah, afternoon, so it'd be right at the end of the school day, so like 3:10 till 5:30 p.m.
Oh, good, good. I can't tell you how much that means to parents, working parents. Don't have to worry about where their kid is and if they're going to get to school, you know, on time and all those kind of things, so they can drop them off on the way to work. And then they don't have to worry about what happens to the kid after school and how he gets home or whatever, because they can pick them up later. It's just a relief, a great relief for parents, so.
I really like, too, that there's the option for the daily versus the weekly, so if they have a schedule or they have their, you know, so is it like you'll have to sign up by a certain time?
Yeah, so we'll provide families, much like our summer playground program, we ask for a schedule.
Yeah.
For this portion, we'll actually ask for a monthly schedule so that we can staff accordingly. That'll probably be one of our biggest challenges, is just having enough staff. Our minimum is 75 kids, or maximum, I mean, minimum, yeah. Our max is 75 kids.
I see.
And we shoot for an average of 10, 10 to 1 ratio. For the older kids, we can get away with a few more kids to staff, and then for the younger kids, a few less kids for staff. But we're looking at six to seven staff people throughout the school year and then even into the summer.
Gotcha.
So that'll be one of the challenges, but I'm confident we'll be able to make it happen.
I was going to ask you, Ben, where in the school were you thinking of having your, having the kids located before and after?
Yeah, so that was a long discussion we had with Amanda. We're going to, our home base will be in the cafeteria. At times, I mean, we'll utilize the playground quite a bit. We might change things up and head up to the library and just kind of relax in that environment sometimes, use the gym. So we'll just utilize the building overall, but our home base will be in the cafeteria.
Super.
Great, great. That's super. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right. Yeah.
Mrs. Silverood, Learning and Student Services Director.
Tonight is our presentation on our, in our curriculum cycle on social studies. So I have with me tonight members of the committee. There are a couple that couldn't be here tonight because of family obligations, but I'd like to introduce to you, you guys can just wave as I say your name, Tracy Zietlow in the kindergarten, representing kindergarten, Deb Galstead representing first grade, Serena, who just had a baby on Friday, representing second grade, Joanne Russo representing third grade, Dan Zeski fourth grade, Sue Velo fifth grade, Lorelei Krieger sixth grade, Mary Carncross seventh grade, Lisa Raedabout eighth grade, Sherry Hanky was our special ed rep, Steve Hicklin in the high school, Glenn Shanky participated in high school, and Jason Quinn for the high school. So we had a very diverse and active group, so it was very good. So just to give you a little review of what the curriculum committee cycle is, we started this process two summers ago. And in the first parts of the process, we went over some professional development. We reviewed what understanding by design was. We reviewed some assessment practices and reviewed a couple other things to help us make sure that we were on track with writing our curriculum to meet the standards. We had a little kink in our social studies curriculum because in the middle of our process, the state changed the standards for us. It would have been nice if we would have been one more year into the curriculum, if we would have been in sync with when the state adopted the standards to be at year one in our curriculum cycle, because the state is still rolling out the plan. But the social studies curriculum have changed to more of an inquiry-based standards, and that's a good thing. We really like that, but the state's still in the process of rolling it out, so we're still learning about those standards as we rewrite our curriculum. So in the beginning, we also reviewed and analyzed data. You're going to see a SWOT tonight, which means we analyze our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats during this process, but that was done two years ago. So as you read some of those bullet points, remember that that's a two-year-old SWOT, meaning that some of those things have actually changed, because none of us like our weaknesses, especially two years ago, we've already started acting to try to change some of those weaknesses. So that's really important. Year two, we spent the summer developing our scope and sequence and our curriculum map, and then we have spent time reviewing materials to make sure that we can implement our scope and sequence. So very important work and a lot of dedication this group actually put in quite a bit of time for it. They're going to take turns reading these slides, not reading them word for word. I told them they're not allowed to do that, but just giving you an overview of the process that they went through to write their scope and sequence.
So two years ago, we began by looking at our strengths. As we took a look at those, we realized that we had quite a bit to be proud of. Middle school and high school students scoring above the state average on state assessments. At the elementary school, we felt we had a lot of really interesting and engaging field trips for those elementary school kids. Our AP enrollments are consistently high, and our test scores in those advanced placement classes, both the U.S. history and the AP government and politics, very high pass rates, around 20 points over the international average for those. At the middle school, a lot of success with the block schedule, allowing more uninterrupted instructional time. And also at the middle school, the TCI curriculum, or textbooks and curriculum that we adopted last curriculum cycle, have been a good success for us as well. Thank you.
I'm going to speak about the weaknesses that we have, and what they seem to stem a little bit from is from the elementary school, to be honest with you, at least what we discovered last, a couple of years ago. The elementary school has not scored very high on any of the state average tests on any state assessment, and we used to be above. And I think some of that has to do with the time that's allotted or not allotted to social studies. They haven't really learned how to even do some testing and stuff. We have probably maybe a 20-minute slot that we can sort of slide in our social studies work on a daily basis. This actually then sort of trickles down or trickles up anyways. It causes the middle school to have some, have to catch up or close some gaps and stuff that are going on. The K-12 sequence covers, some topics are covered multiple times or maybe not at all, a little bit. We don't really have any data that we found anyways on high school and middle school. And then, but, and then high school courses, while really good, as Jason said, sometimes there's conflict because of time constraints or whatever, that they only offer at a certain time or whatever, and they can't sign up for certain ones, so.
Then some of the opportunities we saw would be the middle school curriculum, taking advantage of our LMC specialists, teaching students through current events, and of course, then teaching them that we need to agree to disagree. Even at the kindergarten level, we talk about that, that we need to accept people's opinions without judgment. Lake Mills is in a great location for a lot of different field trips, and then the increasing staff at the high school also would help with more social studies.
Okay, so some of the challenges that we face moving forward, as we look at the different goals for school districts, a lot of times, social studies is kind of lost in the shuffle as we talk a lot about math, science scores, and things like that. So trying to find time for that, especially at some of the lower levels, is sometimes a challenge for our discipline. Lack of special education staff and support, as some of those numbers grow, along with our ELL enrollment, it's sometimes tough for those students to get the support they need, especially when it comes to reading some of the vocabulary with social studies as we read primary sources, and they're using language from 14, 1500s. That can be very difficult for special education students and ELL students especially. As with any classroom, you know, lack of respect in behavioral issues are always something that, you know, you have to be ready for and prepared to tackle. Social studies is no different, and we talked a little bit already about some of the changing standards. As we started this process, they changed on us. Sort of midstream went from being a little bit outdated to, you know, something completely different that we're trying to get a hold of. So that's something that's, you know, good, but it's, you know, something to be aware of and make sure we're prepared for.
Our overreaching goal is students will use inquiry and investigation to understand the relationship between the past and the present, and we want students to think critically and understand their civic responsibility and engagement. The course offerings are listed there. We're very proud that we reach all students in social studies, and students at the high school have to take three credits.
The scope and sequence was created by all of the grade-level reps from social studies, and it's going to roll out this summer. It'll be available online, and it's available on your board docs, too. It includes the unit themes, so for example, it'd be like communities, unit goals, so students would be able to get to know the important roles in their community. Enduring understandings, students would understand that it takes various roles to make a community successful, and then essential questions as well, like what are essential roles that you need in a community in order to survive?
So some of the materials that we reviewed, looking ahead and looking forward, Wisconsin, our state, our story, that's just a 4th grade curriculum focused on the state of Wisconsin. The elementary school went through numerous nonfiction books, materials that would be for a lower level as opposed to a textbook. TCI social studies, which is what the middle school and high school is using now, reviewed the updated versions of those. Scott Forsman, McGraw-Hill, and American Politics Today. So a wide variety of sources that we looked at.
So materials recommended for purchase, grades K through 2, will be purchasing a variety of manipulatives and trade books so that they can do integrated instruction. Third grade, I don't think is up there yet because they're still working on it. Fourth grade will be purchasing the Wisconsin Historical Press books. It's a textbook written for the state of Wisconsin, which is what they focus on. And then the upper grades are doing TCI with online work and textbooks, so that's it.
So just a couple of things I just want to draw your attention to. One of the things that I'm really proud of is that they came up with this overarching goal before we knew that the standards were switching to inquiry-based. So our teachers were already knowing that we need our students to be inquiry-based students before the state said so. So that's kind of a cool little thing that they did, and really focused a lot on what do we want out of social studies. We want them to be able to think critically, and we want them to understand civic responsibility. So really, really important work, and a really nice goal that they come together, that that's why our K-12 theme is. We also did a lot of work on looking at our unit themes and making sure that we were trying to take out some of the redundancies so that it wasn't the same every single year at the elementary level, and that we were making sure that we were hitting it once in middle school and once in high school, but not three times in middle school and never in high school, or that kind of thing. So we really worked at adjusting the curriculum so that everything gets covered more in-depth, not just breadth of knowledge. So, any questions?
Questions? Well, thank you very much. Especially thank you to the teachers for putting all the time and effort in this plan for social studies. We appreciate it.
Awesome, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Strike?
I just have a few announcements tonight. Congratulations to Mr. DiNperio and Dr. Delaney. They will both be returning to the Board of Education after the election last week.
It was.
Three more years. Attached to your packet tonight is the exit interview report compiled by Ron Dayton. Yes, that is Ben's father. He's the consultant that we use as an external evaluator. You'll see the numbers in there. We still struggle with getting participation in the exit review process, and that's disheartening because we really do take all that information very, very seriously and use it to inform how we can, how we can do things better. So you can read through all of that. Attached, you'll also see the recreation update from Ben Dayton, kind of the Dayton Show here tonight. His report is attached, as well as we've attached the summer brochure, so you can see all the offerings. Continues to be a very, very thriving and growing department. And then I have a question for you. Our meeting in June is on June 10th. Ms. Bauer and I will be traveling with the 8th graders to Washington, D.C. I think it's important that, as administrators, we go to look at the program and evaluate the program and make sure it's meeting the needs. And so I'm asking if we could move the June meeting to the third Monday, which would be June 17th. Does anybody have any problems with that?
You okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much. And then along with that, we need to find a new location for our meetings this summer as soon as construction starts. The last time we remodeled, we actually went to the city building. If any of you were on the board then, we went down and used the city council chambers. It's a really convenient place because it's already set up with a camera. We've inquired, and they, they don't have meetings on Mondays, so that's a possibility. We talked about the auditorium, but there are, you know, things going on there during the summer, and, and we talked about the middle school. We didn't think that area that was quite big enough, you know, if we'd have a group like this, so. And the elementary school has really small furniture, so. So does anybody have any thoughts about that? Would you like me to continue to pursue the city council chambers, or?
Sure.
Okay. All right, well, we'll confirm that and then get back to you about that. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any community input?
Mr. Klotz has asked to speak this evening.
Mr. Klotz? Just going to do a song for us? Dance?
I got song and dance out on Saturday night, sorry. But I'm here because I'm the president of the Lake Mills Education Association, and the LMEA and LMESPA would like to congratulate Mr. DiNperio and Dr. Delaney on their reelections to the school board, and we appreciate your ongoing commitment to our students. And I would like to thank and publicly recognize both our LMEA secretary and Lake Mills High School English teacher, Brenda Morris, and Superintendent Pam Strike for taking the time Friday to testify at the Janesville Budget Hearing of the Joint Finance Committee. Both women represented Lake Mills very proudly, and their testimony complimented each other's, echoing what so many across the state clearly know, is that now is the time to reinvest in our public schools. So if you can hear me and you feel that the state budget would like to, should prioritize Wisconsin's public schools, please, there's a way for you to send the Budget Finance Committee your thoughts. You can send your testimony to budgetcomments@legis.wisconsin.gov and call your legislators because Wisconsin's future is our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving into the consent agenda. Last month, we decided to go to a consent agenda, and some of the items on there, just as a reminder, are meeting minutes from finance committee, regular board, facility committee, things like that, as well as approval of vouchers and invoices, treasurer's report, and those types of items on there that are pretty standard, and that's all under the consent agenda. So at this time, does anybody want to pull anything off of that to discuss later? Seeing none, I will take a, a motion to approve it.
Move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moving in second to approve a consent agenda. Any discussion on that?
Can I just, can I just state publicly what it, what that was? So since it's all.
What?
What was in the consent? I know you said the types of things, but just like, say exactly what it was in there?
You may, if you want.
Sure, okay. So the March 11th regular meeting minutes, March's finance committee proceedings, the facility committee proceedings, the policy committee proceedings, the vouchers and invoices, and treasurer's report.
Okay, anything else? Let's take a roll call on that, please.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
David Rado?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Under the action items, so we moved to the action items, and the first one is approval of insurance program for the 1920 school year.
Excuse ourselves.
Yes.
All right.
So I'll take a motion.
Would you like, Mrs. Black, just summarize that?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you'd like to summarize that first.
Mrs. Strike and myself, and Becky Hofferman, who also works in employee benefits, we've been meeting with our insurance broker, Horton Group, to work on the negotiating for our benefit options for next year. We're really pleased to announce that our health insurance, as well as, which is with Dean Health Plan, and our life and LTD insurance renewal, which is with Standard Insurance, are at a 0% for 2019, '20. And we are, our dental insurance is through Dental, Delta Dental, and that will be a 5% increase. We will modify our benefits. For dental, we're changing our bite wing x-rays from twice a year to one time per year, and that would be a 5% increase. We also are recommending to stay with Getmore, who manages our flexible spending accounts, our health reimbursement arrangement accounts, and our dependent care accounts, so. And we have a reduction in costs in that as well. We negotiated a reduction in the charges for that.
Okay, that's good news. I'll make a motion to move the board approve the proposed 1920 employee benefit insurance options for health, dental, vision, life, and long-term disability, HRA, and flexible spending account.
Second.
Moving in second to approve the new package for benefits. Let's do a roll call on that. Won't take long.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes.
[laughing].
So come on back. Approval of 4K rental agreement with Lake Mills United Methodist Church for the 1920 school year.
I had the opportunity to meet with Russ Rado, the treasurer for the Methodist Church, and we reviewed the 4K contract with them, and what you see before you represents a 2% increase in fees. In the past, we had not had an increase every year, and then a larger one in the off-year, so we've stabilized that, so it's a 2% increase. And then we are also going to be helping them out with securing subs for the staff that are involved in that contract as part of that renegotiation of that contract.
I move the board approve the 4K program agreement with the Lake Mills United Methodist Church for the 2019, '20 school year.
Second.
Moving in second to approve the contract. Moving second to approve the contract, 4K contract with the Methodist Church, any discussion, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
David Raedel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of the Spanish trip to Panama.
So as you recall, we've put the departments on a rotation, so in 2020, it will be time for the Spanish trip, and they have chosen Panama. And I'm really happy to report that they have also chosen to use the Interact Company out of Green Bay. That's a company we've also used to go to Costa Rica. I think that they're just absolutely outstanding, and they're really based on, they really understand Wisconsin. The interpreters and the guides with that company really just work with kids from Wisconsin and the Midwest, so it's a really great experience.
So they speak Wisconsin?
They speak, they wear a lot of Wisconsin clothes, and they eat a lot of cheese.
Perfect. I move the board to approve the June 2020 high school Spanish trip to Panama. It's understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
Second, any discussion of that?
Just a quick question. So is it on, is it three-year rotation? So is it?
Yes.
It's Spanish, then?
French.
French, and then?
Well, how does German work into there? Because we have that German exchange in there, too, and then if there would be a social studies trip, that would fit in there as well.
I was just looking ahead for my daughter.
Okay.
[laughing] I told her she'd have one at some point when she was.
Gee, will definitely have one.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
David Raedel?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that, that passes unanimously. Approval of Ford Healthcare School Nursing Agreement for the 1920 school year.
I wanted you to be able to review this entire agreement, and so the whole entire contract is there, and we are looking to keep it at 30 hours per week, and the costs involved are, are there as well with a modest increase.
Motion?
I move the board to approve the school nurse agreement between Ford Healthcare and the Lake Mills, Lake Mills Area School District for the 2019, '20 school year.
Second.
Moving second to approve the nursing agreement. Comments on that?
Do we still have a school nurse? Will this have any impact?
That is her. We contract through Ford for that.
Tony is her.
Tony Zastro has been with us for.
Okay.
Over 20 years.
Wow. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
David Raedel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of summer school staff contracts already.
Already. You'll see there's quite an extensive list there. There'll be more additions, but this is the bulk of the staff. We wanted to get that before you so we could get these contracts out at this time.
I move the board to approve the contracts to all summer school employees for the 2019 summer school program.
Second.
Moving second to approve summer school contracts. Comments on that? Roll call, please.
David Raedel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of updated long-range facility plan.
So the facilities team, and I include Wendy and Rod Hutchins and Harv Simden in that, as well as the facilities committee, we took all of the information, all of our long-range roofing kind of contracts and, or plans for replacement, as well as the information that we came up with when we went through the referendum cycle. You know, we talked about a three-phase plan. We're in phase one right now with the addition here at the high school. So we took all of that information and integrated it into the plan that was already existing, just adding more detail and more time. And you'll see that in each year, this rolls out over five years, every single year, we've included continued to monitor and update enrollment projections. We had that really extensive enrollment projection study done, but.
But, yeah.
Things change, and so we want to stay abreast of the, especially the housing developments in the area, to make sure that we're, our facilities are keeping up with our needs.
I move the board to approve the long-range facility plan as presented.
Second.
Moving second to approve the long-range facility plan. Questions on that? I'm really pleased that we have a plan, and it's a long-range plan, and, and it's, it's, it's very good, I think. Any other comments at all?
And when you approve that this evening, then it'll be on the website for the public to have access to it anytime.
Yeah.
Well?
I have a question. So I'm assuming that this, so this is a, like a Word doc. So I'm assuming that there's also, you know, like a spreadsheet that's easier for people to kind of pinpoint where, where we're going to be looking, like what's up next and when it was last done, and you know what I mean? Like sort of a running record of projects? Do we have anything like that?
No, but maybe we could talk later, and you can tell me more specifically what, what you would think that that would look like.
Yeah, okay, I'm not asking for one. I was just wondering, like, like maybe that's a good idea. So it's an easy.
Like a visual?
Yeah, scan, so you.
We can talk about that.
Yeah.
About how we can, like, almost like the, the construction kind of plans that Myron does for us?
Yeah.
We can look at that.
So that would be easy for you to look at, then, you know, just.
Sure.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
David Raedel?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. And finally, the approval of gifts. We have a lot of gifts.
It has been an amazing month, and I, I just felt like people were handing me checks, and I was handing them to Wendy daily. So it's been a very wonderful.
Want to read that?
Sure. I move the board to accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for their continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. The Lake Mills Market donation of $100 to the Family Connections Fund. Mr. Ken Stetson's donation of $100 to the Family Connections Fund. Lake Mills Moravian Churches donation of $400 to the Family Connections Food Service Accounts. Lake Mills Rotary Foundation's donation of $400 to the Family Connections Fund. Two anonymous donations of $800 to the Family Connections Fund. Three anonymous donations of $400 to the Family Connections Fund. Culvers of Lake Mills donation of $875 to the elementary school. The following donations to the Lake Mills Girls Track and Field Team. Teresa Mullins donation of $100. Jennifer Christians donation of $100. Beverly Reisbeck's donation of $100. Rose Blair's donation of $100. Matthew Christians donation of $100. Christina Pita's donation of $100. The following donations to the Lake Mills Rec Department. Lake Mills Booster Club's donation of $2,750 to help pay for the bigger, faster, stronger clinic for high school athletes. Chapter Two sponsorship of $1,000 for engineering for kids. $1,000 grant from the Green Bay Packers Youth Football Matching Grant Program for the youth football program. Topless Towing and Repair's sponsorship of $500 for engineering for kids. And the following donations for the 2018, 2019 Youth and Family Open Gyms. MK Cellular, U.S. Cellular's donation of $300. Culvers of Lake Mills donation of $300. Dental Associates of Lake Mills donation of $300. Bank of Lake Mills donation of $300. Summit Credit Union's donation of $300. And Home Creations donation of $150. Wow.
Wow, thank you.
Second.
And thanks to all of our.
That's incredible.
donations.
Yeah.
Phenomenal. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
I need a second.
I did, I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did.
What?
I seconded it already.
Okay, yeah.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
David Raedel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Future board agenda items?
So we will be meeting in a special meeting on April 29th at 6 o'clock. At that time, we'll do board reorganization swearing in. We have some potential contracts that, staffing contracts that will be done by that time that we might add, and I do have a resignation that I want to bring to you at that time so that we can move forward. In May, we'll look at the fee schedule, and at that time, you'll approve the staff contracts, the support letters of assignment, the co-curricular letters of assignment.